Hello, good evening. Welcome to our January 11th, 2024 Exeter Township School District Committee of the Whole Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Feig, could you take roll call, please?
Jason Mel?
Here.
Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Deborah Bloom?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
Here.
John Fiddler?
Here.
Dr. Anna Herring?
Present.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Travis Odom?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the Board Table by our Solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the School District Administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Scornavaki Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. The meeting minutes are attached. Does anybody have any changes or discussion that they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the December 7th Board Reorganization Meeting and the Committee of the Whole Meeting or the Board Voting Meeting on December 19, 2023? Okay. Hearing done, we'll move on. We are not amending the agenda tonight, and we'll kick off with committees. Education with Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. First up is conference requests. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following list of staff conferences. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? No, moving on to letter B. It's reported the following field trips within the 60-mile radius have been approved. There is one, two, three there. Any questions or discussion? No, moving on to item C. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following field trips beyond the 60-mile radius. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll move on to item D. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the Statement of Work Agreement between Exeter Township School District and the BCIU to provide professional development for a full day to all K through 12 staff on January 12, 2024. The cost is $900 to be paid through Title III funding. And there is a attachment below.
I just had a question. Is that for all of our staff to get trained and is it mandatory training?
So what we're doing is, is the junior, senior high are getting an hour in the morning, and then the IU persons going to Reifton for all teachers, and then to Lorraine Elementary, and then finishing, we're combining Jacksonwell and Awatton at the end of the day. So all teachers are getting one hour of training. We've seen an increase in our ESL population, so we want to support our teachers and our administrators. So she conducted an audit of our district to get an idea of what were some of our needs, and it's just going to be providing an overview of what we need to do moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Hoyt. E. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between Cottage 7 Education and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for student 8752324 for the 2023-24 school year at a cost of $278 per day for a total of $28,356. Is this a continuation?
No.
No, this is a new?
This is a move, a student who moved in who's, is my mic on? Oh, yeah. It's a student who moved in who's already in that placement.
Thank you. It is recommend, oh, any other discussion for that? No? Okay, moving on to F. Services Agreement. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between the Deveraux Foundation and the Exeter Township School District to provide special education services and program placements for the 2023-24 school year as per the attached agreement.
If you recall, if you recall, some of our private placements do individual contracts by student, and then others of them do a general agreement to let you know what their costs will be for the year should you place a student there. Deveraux used to do individual contracts. They decided mid-year to switch their model, and so now they're doing a general agreement, and so that's what this is.
Thank you. And finally, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve an agreement between the Chester County Intermediate Unit and Exeter Township School District to provide school psychologist services at a daily rate of $888 for no more than six evaluations per month. Evaluations will not exceed three days per evaluation.
Just, is this because our staff, we don't, we don't have enough staff?
Yeah. So this is an agreement that you generally will see each year. Sometimes I do it a little earlier in the year, but this year they were able to maintain compliance up till this point. Now, they have too many evaluations to complete within the mandated federal and state guidelines and mandated guidelines, so we have to contract. We contract with the Chester County Intermediate Unit for this and have for the past several years, and not the Berks County Intermediate Unit, because in the past few years, the Berks County Intermediate Unit has not been able to meet this particular need in this area. And the nice thing about going back to the same well each year with the CCIUs, they're actually able to give us school psychologists that have worked with us in the past, so it makes that a really efficient sort of process, because they know our student database, the system that we use, our formatting, so on and so forth.
And if I understand it correctly, essentially, that's no more than 18 days per month, correct?
Correct.
Which is essentially a month.
Right. So, and it depends on the evaluation, so it depends on what we give them to complete. So there's different kinds of evaluations. So first of all, there's special education eligibility evaluations, gifted eligibility evaluations, and Chapter 15 or 504 evaluations. And they all take different lengths of time to complete, and depending on the student and the severity of need or the complexity of need, that also will drive how long it takes and how many assessments they need to do, observations, et cetera. So that's why it's not a set, you know, each evaluation will take two days or each evaluation will take three days. It is all contextual.
And what would you say in the last six months, we've averaged per month with this service?
We haven't, we haven't used this service.
Oh, I thought you said this was a continuation.
No, we do this every year where we'll put this contract on to be able to do some contracted school psych evaluations, and I usually will put it on in the beginning of the year, but they didn't need help at the beginning of the year. They were able to keep their heads above water, so we're just putting it on now.
I'll ask what I always do, and that is that if we get to the point that this service is becoming nearly a full-time service for us, that we bring it back to the Board so we can at least evaluate the cost versus if we had to look at bringing another?
I anticipated you asking that question, Mr. Morgan, and my answer is we're already looking at that in the budget process that we're going through right now, and since we're talking about that, we're also looking at that in relation to our speech therapy services as well. If you recall, that's the other one that we've been contracting out, and that's a big, that's a much bigger contract item than this one.
Perfect. Thank you.
And as I understand it, this one you already have budgeted for. Is that correct?
Yes. So this one, I always put money in the budget in anticipation of the fact that they're going to need it at some point during the school year.
I thought so. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Okay, so for the Education Committee, items A, C, D, E, F, and G will go towards the voting meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, Finance and Audit Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Feig, we're going to put you to work today. So we're going to start with A, the statewide recovery contract addendums, and, Mr. Feig, I'm going to pretty much refer to you on every one of these items to just give additional detail to.
As you remember, we contracted statewide to collect their delinquent per capita taxes. Statewide has now merged or become sister company with Berkheimer, so the addendum basically is adding the Berkheimer language in there that they're, the two companies are now one. There's no change in the original contract, it's just adding the addendum to acknowledge that they're part of Berkheimer, or Berkheimer is part of them.
Any questions? All right, moving on to B. This one's a little bit bigger. General Obligations. Recommended the Board of School Directors discuss the Exeter Township School District General Obligation Bonds for Series C for 2023 and '24, and the summary of sale, and I believe this is for one bond that's been completed and one bond that is expected to be completed shortly, correct?
Well, actually, since our meeting was moved on Tuesday, I included the sale we had on Tuesdays for 2024, which really came out well, too. So our yields are a little bit over 3%. What we ended up, Series C of 2023, we issued $13,345 of actual bonds. Series of 2024, we issued $13,590,000 of bonds for a total of $26,935, but because of our rating and we hit the mark at the right time, we actually received $30 million in cash. And that's what the parameters resolution was not to exceed $30 million in bonds, but we were looking for $30 million in cash for the projects. The good news, the way it was structured, we had budgeted for $6.48 million in debt service. The first year debt service will be $6.353. After that, it'll be just under $6.3 million, so we actually saved because of where we hit the markets at the correct time.
And there was an expectation that until this, these funds were spent, that we could also collect some interest on those dollars. What, what is your expected outcome now that we're closing?
What we did is, the second issue, even though we received more than $15 million in cash, because, you know, because of the premium, is taxable, but we get that money on the 1st of February, we're actually going to spend the second issue first. So there's a spend-down rule. If you spend it within the first year, you're not subject to arbitrage, you have to give the excess interest back to the IRS. So we're going to spend that first, and the first issue, we immediately invested at 5.45, our yield's 3.2, so we're going to gain a lot more interest on that. So I'm hoping by the time this is done, we get maybe $2.3 to $2.5 million in interest back into the Capital Reserve Fund, and then we also receive rebates on the projects that, you know, because of energy credits and things, you know, $2 million. Our goal was to put another $4 million back into the Capital Reserve Fund when everything's said and done. We've only committed in the existing projects, $28.36, maybe-ish, you know, so we still have $1.6 million to play with of bond funds that have to be spent within the next five years. I think that was really kept because we pulled the, the high school auditorium off to see if we wanted to do it through Co-Stars or piecemeal down the road, so you still have that money there to, to look at.
And the rating has been finalized as well, right? So you talked about that?
We still kept the double A negative. The negative outlook, they said they'd take it off after year if they see another budget that we do not have deficit spending. They said because of the history of Exeter for the last 12 years adopting budgets that were basically taking away fund balance and not balanced budgets, you know, that's why they gave us a negative rating. But they felt confident and truthfully, from what I saw in the bond sale on Tuesday, the buyers were major companies that, you know, they felt confident in our buildings.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question. Would you repeat the amount that you expect us to earn in interest?
I'd say about $2.3 million.
And just for, for my sake and for the public's sake, we put that money into a CD, right?
Well, we use, we use a, I don't know what to call it, a shared consortium, because under law, Act 72, we have to have everything collateralized, meaning collateralized, like if you go to a bank, you get the $150,000 or $200,000 FDIC insurance, they do not give that to businesses. So under Act 72, we have to be an investment that's collateralized, and all our collateralization is really, the banks hold treasuries to cover our, our deposits.
Okay.
So.
So what will we do with that money?
It goes back into the Capital Reserve Fund.
And, and have you already thought about what we can actually, what projects or what, how we use the money?
I'm not looking at projects, because something might come up in five, six years, seven years down the road. Yeah.
For what comes up. Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, you should have a rainy day fund. You know, the state says we have to, in general fund, excuse me, we're only allowed to keep 8%, which I'll fight up and down with the state on that, but it's law under Act 1. 8% only carries 22 days of bills.
Right, yeah.
But you can have a capital reserve fund for major improvements, major projects, you know, major repairs.
Yeah, good. Okay, thank you.
So one more question about that rating. Sorry, Allison. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, and we decimated our Capital Reserve Fund by paying for things ahead of time already.
Correct.
Yeah.
We used it.
So just for clarity, our A, a negative rating, after one year without deficit spending, they'll consider taking that negative off, but just to be clear, this is a 14-year wraparound bond, so if we had to go into deficit spending at some point in the next 14 years, they could put that negative rating back on us. Is that correct?
The negative basically says they, excuse me, they may reduce your rating. It's, it's a warning that if you don't keep what you're doing, they're going to take you from a double A down to an A or something like that. So it's, it's just a warning.
So that risk is there if we do start deficit spending down the road?
Correct.
Okay.
And the ratings basically, excuse me, tell what interest rate you're going to be charged by the bond buyers.
Understood. So I'll, I'll give you a break for a minute. Mr. Mel, one, one more follow-up question, if you don't mind. I know this kind of relates to facilities, but it's not on the agenda, so I'm just going to, it has to do with the bond, so I guess my question is, just in response to, as we start to spend this money, how, you know, you know, I don't know, I don't want to speak for this to the Board, but I'd certainly like to see the projects as we're spending them and what that looks like, how much that cost is, how we're driving that down, and, you know, and then get updates as to the completion of those products, projects as they happen.
And what I was going to suggest is, we, during the projects like the junior high, when it was in full-fledged, we had weekly meetings, and there's minutes taken and put it online. I was going to give access to the chairman or the, the Facilities Committee to look at those, so they can easily give a report from what they see. Now, a lot of the time, the weekly meetings, you know, there'll, there'll be complaints from different contractors that they're being interfered from the other, whatever, that's really, you know, stuff you don't have to worry about, things will get done, but it 'll also tell you where they stand, you know, completion dates and, and what's been completed already.
I've talked to Jen Breton about putting together a dedicated page for the community to file, follow the timeline of projects, so families can, or community, not just our families, but our community can see, you know, where we are, what the timeline of the projects are, where we are with the projects, because people, you know, in the community have a right to know where, where $30 million is essentially being spent, and I think they'd like to be part of that process. One of the things that we talked about that we thought would be a really cool experience for the community is we're, we're looking to see if perhaps we can do some time-lapse photos of the auditorium. The auditorium is essentially original to that building. There's been little done to that auditorium over the last 15 years, other than upgrading of like lighting and sound, and we thought that that might generate some interest among the, the community here and now, but even alumni from Exeter who have moved, you know, across the country, that if, you know, Facebook is, can be pretty powerful, that if they see that, they might have some interest in knowing, you know, what their former junior high looks like. So we're talking about some like really cool things that we can do with these projects, and then we'll be giving the Board updates here, so, to keep everybody in the loop.
I appreciate that. I, I think one of the things that I'd be more, I think that's awesome for the community. We should be doing that. That's one of the things I would like to see that I'm a little more concerned about is as we spend it down. I mean, there are some addendums within that contract that I think Dr. Hayen brought up that, you know, if you don't use it all, we get some of that back.
Right.
Where we want to make sure, I want to make sure that I'm understanding, as we're spending it down, how much is left? Are we on track? I don't think we can spend, the projects are locked, right? So if it come, if they spend more than it was supposed to, we're locked into that price.
Correct.
So that's, that's the good news, and I think it's important that the community understands that if a million-dollar project comes in at $2 million, we're locked into that million-dollar price.
Right.
Correct, and that, that'll be part of the update. You know, when we started this project, when doing all the capital projects and revisiting the original plan that was put together by KCBA, you, you may recall that they had different price points for the different projects, and then when they, when Quandell came in and did their high-level assessment, they kind of stuck with some of those original price points, but then when they really started digging in, particular to the HVAC system at the high school, they found that that, that price point was way off the mark. So we do want to make sure that that, that is part of the communication, and so like what we originally communicated as far as the outline of the projects, the cost of the projects, that will all still be recommunicated, and that will be kept, the Board will be kept in the know. So whatever we discuss at, at the Board level, then that will then be put on, on the website as a way to communicate.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything else on this topic? Okay. Moving on to banking discussion. Recommended the Board of School Directors discuss banking changes on our banking partners for deposits. We were recently informed that our current bank is charging the district 50 cents per night deposit. The district deposits up to 900 deposits a month. This will cause the district to incur significant charges, so defer to you again, Mr. Feig.
Okay, and I say up to, the biggest month is 900, it's normally 500 to 600 deposits. And, you know, this goes everywhere, from every school, to breakfast, to lunch, to all the activities, to the events. I cannot see charging, passing that on to the clubs, you know, they collect things. I have talked to several of the banks, I hope to have a proposal, final proposal for the Board meeting. I have two banks so far that will not charge anything. Have another bank will just charge a, a monthly fee for the account, and the existing bank has not come back to say they'd waive everything, but I was just very upset when I saw it this past month, because I cannot see charging back to student accounts, you know, for money they raised for, for their, their clubs. So I, I plan to have a final tally before, a week before the meeting, I'll send out to Board, but, you know, to open up a new account anywhere, the Board has to pass a resolution, and I do need a local account. We have our, our major banking and stuff is through a consortium with PISLAP, Pennsylvania Liquid Investment Fund. But I still need a bank locally to make deposits at, you know. So I'm not going to send my people across town, so there's only a few that now basically will cover our Act 72 requirements and allow us to make deposits, but it's not the major accounts, but it will be a new account that I'll have to ask the Board to open up.
Mr. Feig, can you clarify? When you say 50 cents, that, that fee, are, are you saying per check? That's deposit?
No, no, it's per deposit slip, but because of fund accounting and the way we, our controls in place, every club, when they collect money or, or checks, it goes into a separate envelope and that's sealed, because someone there has verified it, and it doesn't get opened to, I guess, the bank, so each one of those, you know, you might have 10 deposit slips coming out of, of the high school day.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, we, we thought, do you combine everything and do it on paper, but it's actually going to cost us more for human capitals to do that, and to keep some type of control on, because you have to have two different controls, one for where it originally came from, to make sure that it's double counted, is, you know, someone's, you know, accountable for that, and then the second control would be two people to make sure that they're, they're counting and no one has access to have things disappear, you know. It's, it's not taxpayers' money, but student money. It's, it's, it is taxpayer money, and we have to have controls, you know.
Have we tried reaching out to the bank and asking for an exemption?
I have, and they haven't gotten back. Maybe this will push them.
I mean, I would assume that they want to keep us?
But a lot of times, these big corporations really don't care anymore.
Okay.
You know, a lot of banks don't want to account change.
Any other discussion?
I'm confused about the difference between deposits and night deposit. It says it's 50 cents per night deposit. Are you making $900 night, $900 night deposits?
It's per deposit slip, and they don't not count?
It says in here, per night deposit.
Yeah, it's actually should say per night deposit slip. They, they do not want to cash or count cash during the day, because they have customers waiting, so they make you put it through the night deposit box.
That was my question, why are we making so many deposits at night?
Yeah, they do not want to count cash during the day, because they have other customers there, so they make you put it through a night deposit box, and they'll count it, they call it as a night deposit, but, which I guess I can't blame them, because they might have 20 people in line. Yeah.
I, I agree, but that's kind of their job?
Yeah. I'm not disagreeing with you. I don't know, it seems like, you know, I had another account that ended up switching over to combining just for the fact that they start charging, they want to start charging $15 a month for paper statements, which is all right, but we still have to print them out, because the auditors and the state requires to be able to see paper, you know. To me, it's not worth paying $15 a month for getting a paper statement.
Any other discussion? Mr. Mel, this was listed as discussion. Do we have to, does it have to be an action item for us to give them permission to go look for another bank?
I don't believe there's any action we need to approve until there is actually another bank.
Well, I hope to have proposals for, from local banks by next week, and I wanted to get it out to the Board before the voting meeting, because it's, it's going to start adding up pretty fast.
Okay, so you're, you are asking for a pre-authorization? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I'm asking to put it on the voting meeting with a discussion right before you vote on it.
Okay.
It's, it's like a bid, when you open the bids, I give you the, the proposals, and you say yes or no, and pick the, you know, I'll give you a recommendation, but that's up to you.
All right, so there, there will be an item on the voting meeting?
There will be an item on the voting meeting, because the Board's got to pass
That's our answer.
A, a banking, or a resolution authorizing the opening of the account. I forgot what they call that.
It's just a resolution.
Yeah. Okay.
So it did say, it does say we were recently informed. I guess one of the leading questions for me would be, is, is this a new charge they've added, or did we just catch it?
No, it's a new charge they added.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes more sense, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we have the Pennsylvania American Water Update. Exeter Township School District Administration was notified that Pennsylvania American Water has suspended increasing rates at this time. In addition to filing a complaint against the Pennsylvania American Water proposed increase, the district has submitted a letter to the Public Utility Commission expressing concerns regarding the increase and asking for public hearings on behalf of the Board.
Yes, I have. And I also asked to have, if they would have hearings in Exeter Township, so our residents have the ability to also speak up. The state has suspended the rate increase on December 21st, but they only suspended it through, I think, August 4th, and they designated a lawyer to set public hearings on that issue. So we've asked to have a public hearing in this area. So we've asked to have a public hearing in this area.
And there was something, there is some value to Facebook. There was a post on Facebook from the resident who's been spearheading this whole thing saying that there will be a hearing in Exeter sometime this month. There was no date listed, but it will be held this month in Exeter.
Oh, I got the letter into the state by, I think there was a deadline of the 9th or 7th or whichever.
Yeah, it was the 7th.
Yeah.
So when, you know, so this says publicly hearing on behalf of the board. So is there a public hearing on behalf of the township and behalf of the board? Or are we expecting one public hearing for all entities?
Well, I, on behalf of the board, that I requested it because I'm not speaking as an individual, the board asked me to ask for, you know, a hearing and not to have the increase, you know. So as the board secretary, I sent the request as as behalf of the board.
But if another entity requests, I doubt they would do several public hearings in the same township.
No.
It would be a public hearing.
And I also said for the residents to be able to speak, so.
Very good.
I believe that would be the PUC's actual hearing, not not this board's.
Understood.
Yep.
I think that wraps it up for me. And I think the only thing we are moving to the voting agenda this time is A, and we could potentially bringing new content and proposals for C. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Fidler, Facilities and Transportation Committee.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mel. It's recommended that the board of directors evaluate the current contract with Made to Be Clean. The board had asked for an evaluation after six months of service. Brian, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dump this on you, too.
If you remember, we contracted Made to Be Clean to take care of our our substitute custodial supplies, our custodians. I have Mr. Biggerstaff here and also Diane. We, in the meantime, have advertised a lot, and I'll let Diane talk to this. Go ahead, Diane.
Yes, we have had two job fairs. We had one in October in the evening, and then we had another job fair in November on Election Day, as a matter of fact. And both, we thought, were very successful. However, as we were going through the process, we had some custodians not accept the position. We had some join us and then decide to leave us. So we are still advertising. We're, we actually reopened our Indeed account. We post on Facebook. We do word of mouth. You know, we'll, we'll be planning another job fair in the spring. We're doing everything we possibly can to bring on our own staff.
One one thing I wanted to add is we're looking at really covering substitutes because we had any one day, we might have five to 12 people or 35 people out. You know, they have vacation days, they have sick days. And we've been trying for years just to get our our custodial staff up to par, let alone having a custodial relief, as we call them, or substitutes, which we're we're short on substitutes, too. So my recommendation, I'll let Steve talk to this, would be to continue through the end of the year, minimum. Steve, do you want, do you have a second? And Diane, can you, can you verify on absenteeism? You know, which people are allowed, but.
If I can ask Diane quick before we move forward, did we get a reason from the two that left us as to why they left so quickly?
One of them took another position. They they were actually like, they were applied here and another place as well. They accepted us first and then had a better offer. And that was the same thing for the other person as well.
Do you know, was it an increase in pay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Follow up, have they, did they actually start with us?
No. We went through the process. We brought them on. We did all the paperwork. We had them board approved. And like a week before they were supposed to start, we always do a, like a follow up, like, you know, you're ready to start type of thing. And we would get a phone call back and like, no, I've decided not to take the position.
Thank you.
So I can ask you, we agreed the contract price, that's the contract price we, that we agreed to, it's not been exceeded, it made its manner of fact. We've been consistent with the amount of people that we were asked to get provided, and they have provided that. The staff that's come in has been fine. Most of them have experience. They plug in very well. They're adaptable. So I really have no complaints with the services we've been receiving. We are, again, yeah, as Diane mentioned, we're struggling to hire on a consistent basis. It's it's the atmosphere of people that have never worked in schools before. You hire someone off the street if they've never been a custodian before, they get a 90-day probationary period. You have to plug them in, and it takes a bit of getting used to. They can clean up to 24 rooms a night and gang bathrooms, so there's a lot of responsibility there. Takes a lot of patience and being a little tenacious in in your work responsibilities. And not all people obviously know until they get into the job what they've actually signed up for and what that job entails, even though we offer great benefits. Competitiveness salary-wise for younger folks is a challenge. If, obviously, if you're hiring someone who's in their 50s or more and they're looking to come to the school because we offer great benefits, that's one thing. But when you go to hire folks that are younger, they're looking at a different set of salary requirements, you know, based on a lifestyle that they want to lead. So it gets challenging. We've been working very hard to try to bring people in. But like Diane said and Brian said, you know, on average, it's seven, seven people missing every day, and that's just from job openings, people that could be out on injury, long-term illnesses, or just call out sick. And most days, that number can rise to 12 to 15 in no time. So when you take that out of 35, that's one quarter to one-third of your workforce every day. So you you become to the point where you're scrambling to get folks plugged in so that we can take care of the, you know, almost 4,000 activities we have every year that are going on in the building nightly and daily with sports and other events, and then also handle the daily cleaning of the classrooms, the sanitizing with all the viruses out there. So it gets to be very challenging and it can, it can be demanding. And I know that, you know, Alex, who's been recently hired since July, has done a phenomenal job, in my opinion, to stay on top of things as much as he can and deal with the rollercoaster ride because it's not an easy thing to progress through. But as far as Be Made, they've been excellent. I have no complaint. We asked them for four. They are actually able to give us more if we want them, but that would have to be a consideration made by the board. They don't work very much overtime. We haven't asked them to work overtime. Most of that stays with our hourly employees. But they've been terrific, so.
Steve, the the people who do come from the contractor, how much of that gap are they able to fill? Let's say it's a heavy day of no shows on our part, can four people, four people can't possibly do the work of 12?
No. Basically, right now, we have one building that is too short on a second shift. So we have two of those people plugged in there almost every day. And then the other two will move back and forth from other buildings when we have callouts to try to work that. But the great thing about the Be Made people is most of them have been custodians before in another capacity, and most already have their clearances when they get in. So when you get someone like that who has that job experience, it makes the transition so much easier. So the workload is more evenly distributed amongst the employees that are already there, and they can feel confident that someone's there to, they can handle it.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you remind me from the contract, so it's four people, they're they're serving as an agency and such, right? You don't have to bring all four in?
No, we don't have to bring all four in, but there really hasn't been a week since we've started school where we haven't needed them. And to their word, they have consistently provided them, and they've been good employees.
And what notice do you need to give them if you're only going to bring two in?
We haven't done that yet because we've been so short. But I don't think we, I don't foresee a kind of a future, you know, at least for the foreseeable future, where that's not, that's going to be an issue. But obviously, it's in a conversation, it would just be a matter of calling the contractor and letting them know we only need so many.
So, Mr. Feig, considering that if they could do up to six, I mean, when we talk about the budget and and the people that you're missing, obviously, this doesn't account for someone calls out sick. But if we, if the board considered going to six, even if we didn't use them, is that something that you think would be recommended at this time?
I would recommend it because, just for the fact that I was at a school where we had 30% of the people out, all got the flu at the same time, yet every classroom still needs to be cleaned. It's it's not like the cleaning stops when there's people out because they're spread out through the building. Actually, the cleaning ends up being more because there's, it's not as cleanliness in the bathroom when people have the stomach flu. You know, there's things that, you know, I admire what these custodians do and the things they clean up and, you know, you know, clean up on aisle five. It might be a joke, but during schools, that happens all the time, you know.
And, Mr. Biggerstaff, when when you say that you're having to give in our internal employees overtime, is that because you don't have enough staff or is that because you're not completing all the work and as such, they have to stay longer to get the work done?
So it's it's a combination, and one really affects the other. So like, our high school building has 13 people assigned to it on three shifts. So if you have, and I believe the number, and I wish Alex were here because he'd correct me to be sure, but we have two that work day, one that works mid-shift, and then the the rest of the staff works a second shift or a relief shift, which usually comes in at 2:30. So obviously, if you have three that call out with a stomach bug or something's going on, you'll have people that you're going to need someone to stay and get someone else's area that may not have gotten touched by a person that's missing. So it kind of reflects. And then the other thing, a lot of the overtime that we expend is, believe it or not, for athletics and band competitions and stuff like that for the weekends. Most of the employees work a 40-hour work week, Monday through Friday, and then you have all these events and athletics that take place on Saturday and Sunday. So we are expending most of our money paid out in overtime to cover those events because if we don't have a custodian in the building, there is no one else as a representative from the district to turn the lights on, make sure doors are unlocked, bleachers are pulled out, whatever the case may be or whatever the event may be. So that's a great deal of the money we expend in overtime and comes from those.
Trash cans and bathrooms are cleaned for the school starting on Monday.
But I guess the bigger question is if you do go to six, how much does it reduce your overtime? Or or does your overtime stay the same because of the hours that you need filled off, like meeting weekends?
No, it it can increase depending on the load of the amount of people that are out. The other big issue we have is the staff that we do have here, I would say, on average, the age is 45 or older. So a lot of those folks, you know, have their own challenges in life, families and whatnot. So it's hard to get certain people to stay. The only time we'll make overtime mandatory is during emergencies, snow, power outages, something to that effect, or some kind of a crisis at the school where we need them to stay. In most cases, it's a voluntary thing done by seniority. So consistently, most of the overtime is, you'll find, when you look at it, is the same people over and over again who are younger and do want to stay. You don't really see the fact that you have a lot of people volunteering to do it. It's usually the same names on the list every week, which is great for one respect because they know the building so well and they've been there consistently for a long time. But it is a challenge right now. There's so many things going on out there in the community and in the world. A lot of people are just, I don't know, burnt out would be the.
I I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but what you're asking, if they authorize up to six, in certain weeks, you could use the extra two and other weeks you'd want it.
Absolutely, but.
Would that cut back?
And I'm sorry for not understanding your question.
No, it's kind, I I mean, it was both, really. I mean, I'm always interested to know, like, are we decreasing overtime, which could be at a greater cost than having one more person on staff? But the other one would be, to Brian's point, I mean, it's at your discretion, but it sounds like your discretion now is that if you went to six, you would need six.
So we would always prioritize giving our in-house employees any benefit before we would bring on a contractor. That was agreed upon when we, when we did agree to put out for four. So consistently, we're going to ask them first. There is a lot of, it's a difficult, it's a difficult question to answer, simply just because, you know, I'll I'll say it, I'll explain it this way. In my previous career, long before I came here, we used to use, I worked in a, in a bus garage as a maintenance manager. And what we would do is we would take our lost time and we would look at how many hours. So if you had a, like, 10 employees, five of which are out for a long period of time, you, you know, for one day, you would have 40 lost man-hours, figuring eight-hour day for each person. And then I would monitor that by splitting it in half and figuring a double-time rate and how many hours overtime we could spend based off that equation of looking at it. So if I have five people out in one day, that's 40 hours of lost time, then I would only spend up to 20 hours overtime to cover what I have there so that I'm less than half or equivalent or below what I'm spending. And I try to keep that formula in mind when I'm looking about the overall status of how much money I'm spending budgetary for overtime, because it's it's consistently, if someone has a personal day, you're paying them their eight hours or their vacation time, you're paying them that time. So really, the district is on the hook to pay them whether they're here or not. And paid sick time is the same way. So I'm trying to regulate that by keeping an equation and a baseline of how much I can spend based off the amount of lost time that we have, if that makes sense. And then I try to plug that in where I can best utilize it. And then I take into considerations of my maintenance and grounds department as well and use the same kind of formula. Maintenance gets a little bit more leeway because there are just too many crises of things that just have to happen. For instance, last Sunday, we were here all day doing snow removal, you know, for the majority of the day. So those kinds of things don't fall into that equation, but based off what I see and what I'm spending and what I'm losing, I'm trying to keep that number at a manageable letter, level unless there's a, an absolute emergency, so that we don't go over budget and I'm spending consistently throughout the district.
And you're keeping your, that budget in mind of staying under that budget while you're using the agency?
Yes, sir. Unless there's an emergency, and I have no other choice.
Do we have a cost analysis of of the agency versus what we have in-house and taking everything into account, you know, workers' comp?
Yes, sir.
All taxes, everything?
So when we originally put this contract out, I believe Mr. Feig did a calculation, we calculated that, and the price that Be Made is giving us is the same price as we pay for one of our employees at that same hourly rate. The difference being is we're not paying benefits and and such, so we're coming in around the same cost, whether it's for Be Made or in-house employees. It's around the same price.
Mr. Fidler, my recommendation would be that if the district feels that they need it, that we go from four to six at their discretion and reevaluate this again in 90 days to see how things are going. But that would be my, my opinion.
Sounds reasonable. I think that's pretty much what you were talking about, right, Brian, about going to six? But as long as, as long as we're shown that it's, there's a need for it.
Because there are substitutes and we, you know, my concern is making sure the building's clean, making sure the trash is empty, making sure we're ready for the next day in school, you know.
Good.
And I would like to point out, too, that even though we may be shorthanded and we might not have all the resources we need, we're not going to leave the buildings in a situation where the basics are not being done every day. You will get complaints. We get complaints all the time about, you know, my room hasn't been touched or this bathroom's. We take that seriously. We try to react to it and spread the people around as best we can to make sure that we're not leaving any area untouched. And then we try to also offer overtime for people to come in on the weekends or, like, we have a break tomorrow where the students aren't in the building. And Monday, due to the holiday, we'll utilize that time to try to get the buildings back up to a a better state of clean so that it's easier to manage on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah. And when certain things, like during the winter, when we start getting sold on the sidewalks and things, we're actually scrubbing the hallways every day instead of every other day or every couple of days. You know, so it does pick up work during the winter.
It it is a tough job. If you, if you're a custodian and you have 20 to 24 rooms to clean every day and then you have four gang bathrooms, your eight hours is busy regardless. And we, we do keep an eye, you know, on what's going on with the employees. You can't watch everybody all the time, but for the most part, I'm impressed with our employees because most of them are honest, hard-working people. Everybody has troublemakers. You know, we're no different in some ways or another, but few and far in between. So I think the people we are hiring are quality. It's just there's not enough of them to go around in the current economic state to get what we need, so.
How frequent are these weekend events that you were talking about? Are they every weekend or they?
Oh, my goodness. Yes.
If they're, if they're, I'm sorry, I'm a new school board member, but if they're every weekend and you find that there's a need, should we be paying overtime every Saturday? Could you use creative scheduling to make sure that somebody's scheduled on a Saturday? Could you use creative scheduling to make sure that somebody is scheduled on a Saturday?
You could.
Which would reduce the use of overtime? Have somebody work, let's say, Tuesday through Saturday instead of Monday through Friday?
We've discussed this in the past, and I know that other schools and other places of business have looked at it from a different point of view. And there are things you could do. You could change schedules. However, any person you take away, since there's a consistence, consistence need every day in every building during a school day, it's hard to touch the 35 that you have and move them in a way where you're not going to suffer somewhere else if you would put someone on a different shift. So the other options are is you could hire part-time workers. And you could do that. I don't know if that's been a consideration in the past. I haven't been here long enough to know what Exeter's done on a consistent basis over the years. That is a consideration. You could use an outside vendor to come in and supplement your force on those weekends. We have done that with certain projects that we've done. So it is something that we could do, but it would also have to be planned and budgeted at a senior administration level.
Or possibly even offer the current staff flex hours?
Yes, ma'am. That we do utilize part-time people in the bus garage. So it's not a thing that we don't do already or in the.
Yeah, if I could just, yeah, if I could just jump in there. So our custodians are part of our support staff and they are, it's a union. And so we have a contract that we must follow, that we negotiated with the union, and it provides guidance about, you know, how we pay overtime and things of that nature. We did recently, at one of the job fairs, have someone inquire about the possibility of, of working, you know, Saturday through like Thursday. And we have, we have considered it, but that's something that we would have to discuss with the union and look at through the lens of the contract. So we are definitely looking at the next contract as a possibility to offer a flex type of schedule. But at this time, you know, unless we have someone who has interest in doing so, we are going to stay within the contract as it is. But that's something that we can certainly can consider and look at and then have conversations with the union if it, if there's a serious interest in doing so. Because we also believe that that could gain some other individuals, you know, people that because of a spouse's work hours or a child's schedule, that they're looking for some type of alternative. And so we have thought about that.
And I, yeah, I wanted to say, too, just a reminder, like, because you're new. We also charge outside groups when we, when they do use our gyms for overtime. So if one of the clubs, like youth kind of clubs are using it on the weekends, we, they are actually paying for those custodians to be there. It's not, you know, coming, I mean, it's kind of an, we like made a special rate, right? It's not.
An average.
An aver.
An average overtime rate.
Yes, average overtime rate. We made that. But so the junior, like the elementary schools mostly are, we're getting money back from that. I guess the high school, junior high, that's more our own clubs and teams. So we, you know, we bear the cost of that. Correct?
Correct. Tim and I were just talking. It's, you know, like this weekend, I think, is all of our own stuff.
I mean, it's for the betterment of the students. These activities are there. So I don't mind supporting them in any may, you know, I don't want to come off that I, you know, oh, I hate athletics. I do not. I think it's a great thing for the students and for the community, but it is a challenge also to staff all these events and be there.
Diane, I don't know if you know this, but where do we sit with paying for our custodians in the county? Are we average, paying average amount?
We're a little bit below the average.
We're below the average. Okay.
And if I could just add with the absenteeism, during like the holiday season, the absenteeism goes up, not necessarily for sick time, but a lot of our custodians put in for vacation days and personal days. So a lot more custodians are out around a holiday. So that's a challenge as well.
Would we have to get, if we went up to six, I remember looking at when we decided to have them come in, was there a difference between having two and four in cost? Forgive me. Was there a difference or was it the same like rate per person? So if we went up to six, it would just be?
It was the same rate per person. We just had to decide on the number and we felt comfortable that, you know?
Understood. I couldn't, I couldn't remember, so thank you.
And we're talking there, these are, and I want to make sure we use this word correctly. These are substitutes.
Yes, understood, yes. I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the.
And we're not required to use all six or all four, right? We could use one in a day if we need, according to the contract.
Of course. I just couldn't remember if part of the contract said we had, we got a discount because we decided to have four or something. I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
One last question on the, what you were speaking on about the union. Is there a stipulation within that contract about how many outside substitutes that we can have versus how many people we have currently on staff?
So there is language in the contract that allows for us to outsource when needed when we're unable to fill the positions ourselves. And we have a good relationship with the union. They know that we have been advertising and trying to hire people in good faith. We just simply cannot meet the demand that we have. So this substitute service is, you know, providing some additional support and honestly, some relief for our custodians. They are hardworking. They're there very early in the morning, some stay all night, and then, you know, then they stay for an activity to open a building. So we do have really good people that are working. They just, they simply can't do it all, so.
So this was really a discussion centered around evaluating the current contract. So I guess my question is maybe more for Mr. Feig. Is your expectation to bring a new proposal to the voting meeting or is it simply we are going to continue with the current contract that we have?
My expectation was continue with the current contract. But if you went up at the six or give the authority, I think that will take some of the ants off my back worrying about having the schools cleaned for the next day.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd defer to the solicitor here if we can do a straw poll to do that or if that needs to be.
Yes, you can do a straw poll to authorize a renegotiation of the contract or just an addendum to add two additional folks at the same rates, whatever. You'd have to negotiate that with the company.
Yeah, right, right.
But you can take a straw poll if everybody wants to head in that direction and authorize Mr. Feig to go ahead and work that, work through that.
Sure, let's, let's do that. If you won't mind going, going around the table, starting with Mr. Odom. If you could just say yes or no, if you approve an addendum to increase?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Yes.
I'm a yes.
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 Okay, there we go.
I'm a yes.
Okay, so we'll expect a new contract at the voting meeting?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't want to cut off discussion. Was there any more discussion?
If there is a vote on it, could we add within that motion that we reevaluate in 90 days? Would everybody be okay with that?
Sure.
I just think we should stay on it because, I mean, obviously, the employment is fluid as we do.
Can we just say in April?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just.
Where our board meetings go.
I mean, I mean, this is a perfect example of how we said something and it's, you know, it's meeting part of the need but clearly not meeting all the need. And we have the ability within that contract to use or not use the number of people. So I think we should continue to evaluate it to see how it's going.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Moving on to Personnel Committee, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, we have, first up, our resignations, and we have a resignation of a support staff substitute. We have some appointments, and the appointments are for one certificated staff and for two guest teachers. Then we have a recommendation, or just on discussion, for a change of status of two support staff substitutes and an additional assignment for one support staff. And then three leaves of absence. Is there anything anyone would like to discuss? Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Dr. Herring with policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Last month, we approved to split one of the school board committees into two. Finance, Facilities, and Audit is now Finance Committee and Facilities and Transportation Committee. So the following two policies have been updated to reflect those changes. Policy 005, Organization. Policy 006, Meetings. They're up for first reading. Is there anything you want to add to that, Mrs. Harris?
No, just next time, you don't have to do all that work. I'll explain all the policies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was outstanding, Dr. Herring. I mean, that was really good.
Any questions from anyone?
Nope, you got it. Just updating the names in those two policies.
Awesome. Thank you. And then can you remind us and also for the new members? So this is first reading, and then we go to second reading. Do we vote on first reading and second reading or how does that work?
Nope, it just goes through the process and then you have the final vote on the, on the policies.
Wonderful, thank you. And that's everything, Mr. Mel.
Great, thank you, Dr. Herring. Next will be public comment, but no one has signed up, so we'll be moving along. The items moving on to the January voting meeting will include meeting minutes, items 3A, C, D, E, F, and G, items 4A and C, there'll be a new banking proposal, item 5A, a new custodial contract, item 6A, B, C, D, and E, and item 7A. Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
Is 7A moving to the voting or is it just first reading?
It's moving for second reading.
Moving for second reading, okay. I just have one thing, Mr. Mel. As always, when we talk about budget, I'd asked if we could get quarterly, quarterly reviews. I know that obviously, we just closed out December 31st and was just hoping that we might be able to get a first-half review and at the February count, maybe.
That would be perfect.
Awesome. Thank you.
May not be superintendent.
So I just, I just wanted to put out publicly a thank you to St. Lawrence Borough and the Exeter Township for their help and support and mostly their communication in keeping our transportation department and myself informed about the road conditions in the district. We've had some unusual weather, some significant flooding that has made some of our roads very difficult for, for us to navigate. And they're just, they're flooded and where there are trees down. And, you know, you can't turn a bus around, you know, it's just not turning a bus around on a church lane. So, you know, I just, again, would like to thank both the Borough and the Township for their communication and their support when we're trying to make a decision about getting our buses out and getting our students delivered safely to school and then getting them home safely. So just a big thank you.
I would just like to offer my personal congratulations to the science students. I'm reading now from our Facebook post, who competed in the recent Science Olympiad. The team who competed against 250 other students from regional schools placed first, second, or third in nine STEM-based events, earning an overall fourth-place finish over 15 teams. Students are advised by Mrs. Amber Bowlinger and Mr. William Lasky and test their knowledge in many different areas of science. I would like to recommend and to the administration that we invite Mr. Lasky and Mr. Bowlinger here and some of the students to talk about what they did, talk about their accomplishments, and bring the medals. We, you know, I've been a voice for showing the public what our education looks like, and this is just a prime example and a great way to start the year. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, our next meeting will be our voting meeting on Tuesday, January 23rd at 7:00 P.M. We will also be having an executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss safety and security along with litigation. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting. Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.